I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. LaFever?
Here. If you want to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item of business tonight will be public comments and hearings. For the public comments portion, the district was accepting any communications that people wanted to submit via email. And any emails that we got were then forwarded to me. And so I will read them. We have one. "In light of the recent global pandemic, is the school board considering refunding the portion of its cash reserves that are in excess of its own board policy of 34% of next year's budget? I would also like to hear a comprehensive discussion from this board on refunding the approximate $18 million from the pending land sale on Plum Grove Road. The community is facing an unprecedented rainy day. I'm counting on our local elected school board officials to put aside unnecessary 'nice to have' capital improvements and refund this money back to the taxpayers. Doing this would show support for the broad-based economic impact this virus has placed on Schaumburg, Palatine, and Hoffman Estates. It's these same community members that pay dearly to support our schools, and we deserve this consideration. I would like a response on both issues." Thank you. John? That's the only public comment that was submitted. We will move on to the next item, which is our public hearing on the proposed reduction in force of teaching positions. First suggested motion is that the public hearing on the proposal to conduct a reduction in force of teaching positions in Township High School District 211 is now open. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. So the hearing is now open. I don't believe we got any public comments for the hearing. So our next suggested motion is that the public hearing on the proposal to conduct a reduction in force of teaching positions in Township High School District 211 is now closed. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries, and the hearing is now closed. Our next item of business will be the consent agenda. We have two suggested motions, and we're gonna break out a third suggested motion. We're gonna remove Item J, bids for consideration, and we're gonna deal with that separately. So our first suggested motion will be that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 12, 2020, and the removal of Item J, bids for consideration, be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Our second suggested motion is that the minutes of the regular meeting of March 12, 2020 be approved and placed on file. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Abstain.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. And now our third suggested motion is that Item J, bids for consideration, be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved. Second.
Discussion here.
Yeah. I talked with Dr. Kates earlier today about this, the bid, specifically that there's only one. It has to do with floor work replacing carpet, I believe, and some replacing some woodwork. I think that it's, if Dr. Kates could give us a little background, I think it will show the due diligence that the district takes in looking at some of these bids, especially ones that are in this magnitude. There were some, I think, some things that District 211 was instrumental in finding out as part of the bidding process. So Dr. Kates, if you could...
Sure. Safeguarding controls, always important to us. And regarding public bids, there's a very definitive law about it that is instructive, and that a law has several components to it. In addition to one being that we would accept the lowest bid, there's another about who is eligible to bid. And I'm gonna let Lauren talk a little bit about some of the details, but we did, to make sure for the board that we fulfilled both sides of those factors, we did some very extensive investigation that is not necessarily always common, but we wanted to make sure we provided it for your assurance and our assurance as well. Lauren, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So as Dr. Kates shared, there are several bidding requirements that we abide by, including holding a public open bid meeting when we are opening any of our bids. And we are required to award our bids to the lowest responsible bidder. And through this, we know that the bid recommendation that's before the board tonight is the low bid. And our charge through our attorneys was to ensure that this was the most responsible bidder, as well as that we were adhering to all of the other bidding laws as well. So through this, after learning that there was a bid rigging scheme that the district was not subject to, we wanted to ensure that all of our bids were completely legal. We have obtained, we have reviewed the law thoroughly to ensure that all of the components, including the company and its employees, were in compliance with that and present you with this bid, with our attorney's seal of approval that we are within the constraints of the bidding laws.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
I'm not seeing where we had just one single bid. I mean, when I'm reading here, I'm seeing two returned bids, like five bids were returned, three being empty for the carpet. And then for the second one, I see two bids being returned. So what situation with a single bid are we talking about? Do you have different information than I don't?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Kramer, but I think what he was referencing was that there was one bid in particular that he wanted to address and have some further backup provided to the board about.
Yeah.
I appreciate the background. I do. And I really appreciate the due diligence. I just wanted to make sure I had the same information, because what I'm reading here, I don't see a situation where we had only one bid returned, and we were just going with one. I see competing offers for each of these. So I just wanted to make sure that my information was the same as what everybody else seems to have.
Hi, it's Steve. Thank you for bringing that up and having the discussion around this. I also want to thank the administration for doing an extensive amount of due diligence. I had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Kates about this earlier, as well as another individual, and review, for the second time, all of the documents and information that we were provided. And under the circumstances, I think that a very, very thorough job was done by all. So kudos to everyone involved in pulling that information together, sharing it with us, and helping us come to a decision this evening regarding the bids that were presented.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next item of business is Special Reports and Communications. We have our Freedom of Information Act requests. If no one has any questions here, we will move on to unfinished business. The item here, we have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the terms and conditions of sale of real property located west of Plum Grove Road and north of Wise Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I have to be candid. I was surprised that this occurred, that it may be necessary to provide an extension. I thought that the process was going along smoothly until recently. So I think it might be a good idea to understand exactly what caused the need for the company to request a three-month extension.
Sure. So let me start, and then I'll hand it over to Lauren here in a little bit. So the first time we went through this process, it is not common that we would sell a large parcel. And while we had an extremely experienced developer, and while we had a village who does this all the time, it was newer to us. So as the process wore on, and they saw an extension, you know, we kept hearing there was good reports from people, and we worked from that information. As the deal eventually fell apart, we learned quite a bit from the original process. So throughout the course of this second round, if you will, we have been closely engaged with both parties. And the approval process is broken into two separate parts. And the first part occurred without any complication. And the second part is proceeding much more efficiently and much more substantively closer to a final resolution in closing the deal than our first deal was ever able to progress. So that's very encouraging. I'm gonna let Lauren describe to you a little bit about, you know, where we are, but I want to give the board our assurance that we have been actively asserting ourselves into the communication and exchanges with both parties just to make sure that everyone has the same information and that we are aware of the information that is, you know, going back among the two parties that we have involved ourselves in to become, you know, a third party to make sure that you are informed as well. So Lauren, I'll let you describe a little bit more about where we are.
Sure. Thank you. So we are, what I'm pleased to share is that the development plans and sequence with NITI Development is further along than we were with the former developer. They have submitted formal application and formal plans to the village and are in the staff review process. So that is, and in our close communications with both the village and with the developers, we understand that it is not every day that a 60-acre parcel is developed in the village of Schaumburg, and it is a very extensive and detailed process. There are many just requirements and elements of review that you may not see in other smaller developments. Not that the parameters are different, so to speak, but just the level and the vast array of details that go into this project. So I think with that understood, the process of review and hopefully ultimate approval is just, it's a much more complicated process, and it involves more than NITI Development as an entity themselves. There's numerous parties that they are working with, their engineering firms and the like, that all have a role in this development and the plans that are submitted to the village. And just knowing, again, with the exchange back and forth between the two parties, the amount of time that it takes to put that level of comprehensive information together to submit, it's a lengthy process. And we have no indication. We have positive reviews from both sides and have continued to be in contact with both sides throughout the process, and just believe that the extra time will give them the ability to obtain the additional documentation and proceed to the next level. They are, as I mentioned, in the staff review process. Following this, they would go to the zoning board for approval, followed by the village board for final approval. And we have worked with the village to develop their timeline to ensure that our revisions to the contract fall within that.
So the June 30th date is highly likely to occur, is that correct? That the property will be closed by the end of June?
It is likely. The village has told us that this aligns with their timeline. And, you know, assuming that all pieces continue to fall into place, that, you know, this is a timeline that they are comfortable with. And NITI has told us that they are able to execute a quick closing. The approval date is June 15th, and they've told us that they are able to have a quick closing date thereafter. And that's why we have the June 30th date.
Did they give this kind of indication? I'm sorry. I know this, I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer. Did they give this kind of indication after all of this, you know, has recently happened? Or was this kind of before everything shut down?
It was before, yeah. It's unrelated to any of the sort of national, worldwide circumstances.
And that remains to be the case? Like, they haven't indicated that this would derail this plan in any way?
They have not.
And just to clarify, the changes in the agreement, we're basically extending the option for NITI to opt out with minimal penalties, and we're extending the duration that the administration will need to support and service their efforts with the village of Schaumburg. But there's nothing here preventing them from executing and purchasing the property from us at any time prior to this extension, correct?
You seem to ask a couple of questions there. So let me try to address them. So the option would exist for them to close prior to June 30th, if they had approval. That would be possible. And then what we did in our communication was we were able to sort through to make sure that we understood, and we understood that both of the other parties understood what it is that they both need from each other in order to achieve the approval. We are not the village, so we can't speak for the village. But we have a very good understanding, and we know that NITI has a very good understanding of what it is the village seeks. And we have, you know, confirmation that they are proceeding with those particulars as requested by the village. Does that answer your question, Mr. Dombrowski?
No. Just to clarify, I understand that certain things are contingent on the approval process, but the village approval for the development is not something dictated by the Board of Education that's being dictated by the buyer, correct?
There are two phases of the approval. If the question is, must we extend it? We do not have a necessity to extend it, but it would call in to question the deal itself, to say, well, do they want to proceed with the deal, or do they not? And I recommend to proceed with the deal, give them an extension to get the approval.
Right. But to clarify, the six-month agreement that's in place to get the village approval was established by the buyer, not necessarily by the Board of Education. We entered into that agreement with the, with NITI based on their setting of that timeline, and now they're asking us to extend that even further, correct?
That is correct, yes. Yeah. We don't attribute it simply to one party. We think that there was a whole very, very complex set of variables that Lauren described that, you know, resulted in the need for an extension here through June.
All right. If there are no, any other questions? Or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. All right. That will bring us to new business. First, we have a suggested motion that the Board of Education adopts the attached resolution authorizing the reduction in force of all part-time, non-tenured teachers. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have the release of sign language interpreters and first-year teacher assistants. We have a resolution, be it resolved, that select sign language interpreters and all first-year teacher assistants, as presented, not be re-employed for the 2020-2021 school year due to a decrease in the number of positions available at this time. Be it further resolved that said employees be notified by personal service by the Board of Education Secretary of their terminations and honorable dismissals as sign language interpreters or teacher assistants in this school district in accordance with the Illinois School Code. If personal service cannot be made, the notices shall be sent by certified mail, return receipt, requested. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question, is this, you know, my first time through the cycle here. Is this a normal, this is not out of the ordinary to have this resolution at the end of the school year, is that correct?
Right. It's a protective measure, and it is annual. And by statutory, we have to do it a certain number of days before the end of the school year.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have early morning work sessions. A suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to approve 12 morning work sessions, each of which would be 75 minutes on the following Tuesdays. August 25, 2020, September 8, 2020, September 22, 2020, October 6, 2020, November 3, 2020, December 1, 2020, January 19, 2021, February 2, 2021, February 16, 2021, March 2, 2021, March 16, 2021, and April 20, 2021. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just curious, was this proposed schedule put up against any religiously observed holidays by our students or staff?
When you say put up against, when we reviewed with our teams, there were no conflicts that we were to identify. So we did not send it out to the public, but we did review within our leadership teams and within our own calendar review. And there were no conflicts.
So there were no potentially religiously observed holiday conflicts with our teachers or staff that would attend these sessions?
Right.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz? Did I hear her? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. So we have potential topics for future discussion. If nobody has anything to add there, we'll move on to committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
All right. So we had our Zoom meeting last night. They gave us an overview of how it was going with the e-learning. It seems to be working fairly well. A number of families have identified the appreciate what NSSEO has done and how they've prepared for it as opposed to maybe a couple of the other elementary districts. So they're very happy with what NSSEO is doing. Some of the things that they cover there, they have families working on the life skills, such as cooking and baking and doing some outside type of activities. They've done some different lessons and exchanged the video messages. There are some read-alouts. They've also tried to incorporate some STEM and some STEAM activities, and they have art and music lessons. So it sounds like they're pretty well-rounded there. NSSEO is also sending food to their students, and they're using the bus service, Richly, to help get that food out to the homes. Julie, the business manager indicated that the IMRF rate is higher, and it's looking like it's going to be 12% what NSSEO is going to have to put in towards it. The budget, we should be receiving the budget. It will be sent to Dr. Kates, and then I would suspect that, you know, Dr. Kates then will forward that out to us. It'll come electronically. And it'll have an overview on NSSEO, some of the costs that are involved, and then specific information on District 211, what the costs were last year and what the costs are going to be, or excuse me, what the costs are this year and what they will be for the next year. Ask that you take a look at it when you get it, and we can talk about it at our May meeting, because we'd like to have a vote on it with our board at the May meeting, and then we bring it to the June NSSEO meeting for the approval by all of the districts. Julie also talked to us about the state transportation reimbursement. She stated that they get 80% reimbursement, and that's because it's special ed, so they're getting more. However, there are some legal things that are going on, and Dan might be able to explain it better than I can, but we have a transportation agreement with Richly Bus Service. And because of the pandemic and everything that's going on, some of the legislation says that the districts have to pay for their providers. So NSSEO made an agreement with them to pay 85% of the costs. Richly was able to decrease some of the costs because the buses aren't really traveling, so it's limited to the gas cost they've decreased. Buses have been coming over to the Kirk School on Friday, about six or seven of them, and they are used to deliver meals to the students on the varying routes. And let's see. That's about it. There was no shining star because everybody was working from home. So that summarizes. Thank you.
All right. That will bring us to Ed Redd, and...
I have nothing.
Mrs. Klimkowitz says nothing. All right. Finally, we have our announcements. And I believe Dr. Kates might have a couple of words to add before we adjourn.
And do, just amid these challenges, I did want to take just a minute or two to thanks the people who have been doing excellent work during this unparalleled... doing excellent work during this, you know, unparalleled time. I want to thank the board for all that you have supported so that we can serve our students with highly trained people, world-class infrastructure and a personal device for every student. It is your support that has enabled us to. This is Malice, provide leadership and vision to a team of instructional leaders who have kept learning going for all of our students throughout the district. Quebec's quiet, calm, and quality services provide critical supports to students who need our connections the very most. This oversight operation so that we can continue to operate as close to normal as possible during a time that is far from anything like we have ever seen. Jean Britton has had critical work to create what is an equivalent of a new human resources department while always delivering support to our most important asset, and that is people. The children has been essential in gathering information, preparing communications, and supporting leaders throughout the district who now operate our schools in ways we never envisioned. Your endorsement has sustained the technology foundation and infrastructure and now serves as the primary connection for all of our 12,000 students and staff members. Peterson has prepared and delivered important communications throughout this crisis, all of which have provided much-needed assurance and connection so that everyone can see the path ahead and keep going. At the Lingus organized continuous meetings that used to happen weekly and that now happen daily so that our leaders can continue to reach our staff members and our students. I want to express particular thanks to Stacy Lenahan and all our terrific, caring, and hard-working food services staff members. In the past four weeks, counted today's distribution of 3,700 individual bags of food. Through Stacy's inspiring work, she has led the food services department to pack and hand-deliver close to 14,000 bags of food, providing over 170,000 individual meals to our students and families. This is utterly amazing, and we all can take example from Stacy's work. Our food services people are a lifeline to many of our students and their families. Andy Hauser has provided instructional support to teachers throughout the district who are working hard to deliver quality learning opportunities, even though everything about the classroom itself has been redefined. Mary Erickson, Mary Crone, and Lindsay Tierdally ensure that our special education students maintain a connection to our staff members and to the supports that help so many of them. Our Peterson maintains the business separation so that our financial position remains stable during a period of unparalleled instability. Our vendors get paid, and our staff members get paid. Always critical to what we do, our principals have been working morning, noon, and night to support their staff members, to sustain everyone's spirit, and to ensure that every one of their students and families will continue to drop on the wealth that our schools provide to the entire community. All of the leadership teams, which include the assistant principals and department chairs, have served at the highest level. Our teachers, counselors, psychologists, and social workers have been utterly fantastic. When we have 85 and 90% attendance in kids leaving in our schools, this speaks volumes about the important roles and connections that our teachers and student services people have in the lives of our students. I want to mention two people in particular. Andy Park has been a member of our technology services team for over 25 years. He quietly works all day and all night, long into the night, to ensure that all our student information and our technology services are delivered with the very highest quality. Sally Simarasty, who always looks for any way she might be of help to any person. She's been a constant source of support, and we are grateful for her. All of these people and countless of our administrators, support staff members, teacher assistants, bus drivers, maintenance and custodial staff members make District 211 a truly remarkable community. They say it takes a village to raise a child, and I'm proud to stand among these wonderful people as a member of the District 211 village. Thank you.
All right, if there is nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.